I'm here today to ask that the commission...
Will you give your name and address for the sorry?
Betty Ashby, 1186 Thorne Hill Drive in Silva, North Carolina.
Are you a Duke customer?
Yes, my name is... Boy, am I a Duke customer.
Please make your statement.
I'm here today to ask for a complete and full audit, financial audit of Duke Energy dating back to 2001. That would be a 10-year, full 10-year audit before any rate increase is considered in any way, shape, or form. As I'm sure most of you all know, back in 2001, a whistleblower initiated an audit of Duke Energy that showed 124 million was under-reported in regulated property between 1998 and 2000... 1998 to 2000. Duke understated their regulated profits by 124 million. This included at least 15.8 million in executive compensation. The list goes on and on. We're getting late. I won't go into it since probably at least some of you were present during this process. There was a grand jury investigation. Duke Energy paid a $25 million, whatever you want to call it, compensation settlement to the state of North Carolina's and South Carolina for this under-reported income. And they did this, they under-reported this income, and shifted income around so that they wouldn't go over their allowed profit margin. We happen to my knowledge, I was talking with Mr. Franklin about the Liberty audits and the affiliate audits, but as far as an actual financial audit done by an independent firm just like Grant Thornton did, if they discovered 124 million in under-reported income for two years, what would they discover for the 10-year period that's passed since then? I think giving them any form of rate increase before this audit is done, essentially we're letting the fox watch the hen house right now. We're depending on them to come forward and say, "Well, this..." Like this other gentleman that worked evidently for Duke as a power technician, reported they would wait to repair a line so they could put it under this maybe regulated income as opposed to this unregulated income. Instances like that that we need at the audit forum. Before any rate increase is even considered, they should have this audit by an independent firm showing are they in fact reporting all the income. There was another $50 million that was under-reported to their nuclear insurance fund. They paid, or no, excuse me, it was 89 million. They paid back 50 million and stated at the time in 2002 that could be used to reduce rates the next time the commission moves to set rate hikes. To my... I've gone through docket after docket, and I've not seen where this 50 million that they were supposed to set back to help offset rates in the past 10 years has been utilized. So how we can say that their rate increase is based on they're allowed this percentage of profits when we don't really know what their percentage of profit is, we're relying on them to tell us, I think is irresponsible. We need an independent auditor to come in and look at Duke Energy's books for the past 10 years and determine are they in fact reporting all the income in the proper category. They have a proven track record according to the grand jury. Audit found Duke undertook a coordinated effort to identify and report entries which would lower Duke's net utility operating income reported to the state commission. That was 10 years ago. They have a proven track record of cooking the books to get these rate increases. To give them another one before we have looked at the past 10 years of books since this 124 million was found, I think is very irresponsible. We... Duke Energy, utility companies, they give up their right to be profit companies because they get a monopoly. They're allowed to pursue a reasonable amount of profit, but that is supposed to be regulated. Here we have a company that is ranked 173 of the Fortune 500 companies. This is a private utility, okay? When other companies are going under, Duke Energy shares have now crossed the 5% yield mark, which is unheard of for a utility. In June 21st, 2011, Duke Energy declared a quarterly cash dividend increase of 2% to a .25 cents per share. The year before, they did .245, a half a cent less. Each year, they're increasing their dividend yield for their shareholders, and they're doing this as expensive rate payers. And there's no proof that we can go back and say, "Well, this much was spent on this, this much is spent on that. All we have are Duke figures." We need the figures from an independent auditor to come in here and say, "Yes, this is actually what they're doing." How in this economy, this company is posting these obscene profits when they're supposed to be a regulated utility that makes a reasonable profit, but at the same time, it's not supposed to be a Fortune 500 company? Not only just a Fortune 500, large cap, it's 173. It's outperforming pharmaceuticals and tech stocks. And how is it doing this without taking this money directly out of our pocket and just handing it over to these shareholders? Where is the accountability for what they're claiming is their cost on this? Where's their accountability for where they claim this belongs in this category? I mean, they played... I've got a notebook full of games that they played when they turn in their paperwork saying, "We've collected this much money from a regulated source. We've collected this much money from an unregulated source." I want to see an independent audit that says what they are collecting from what source, not Duke Energy's figures. It is in their best interest. And a grand jury investigation went on, and we have DAs in North Carolina saying, "We were going to prosecute, but the Fed stepped in." Nothing ever happened. For the 124 million that they had under-reported, they required to pay 25 million back to customers. So that's a net profit to them of $99 million for cheating. And they got away with the dent, and I think they're getting away with it now. How could they possibly be posting these types of profits in the economy that we have when we have these major corporations posting? I mean, the average for a public utility is of a yield is somewhere between 1.6 and 1.7. They just crossed the 5 mark, and they're fast approaching 6% yield. That's totally unreasonable for a utility that's supposed to be... These are our resources. This is our water. This is our air. It's our water being contaminated by the coal ash that they dump here. It's our air that's being polluted by their coal companies. These resources are coming from the public good, and they're being turned into massive Fortune 500 profit. That's not the intent of a utility. You know, I'm all for capitalism when you're talking about products and goods and services, durable goods, but not for necessities. These necessities belong to us all, and they should be very carefully regulated.[465.13][465.13](APPLAUSE) It upsets me that Duke just guaranteed a loan to the Democratic National Convention of $10 million, okay, for it to be hosted in Charlotte in 2012. They are manipulating the political system to promote deregulation and this entire cap-and-trade fiasco that is essentially allowing these polluters to trade in pollution. We're actually allowing them to turn pollution into a profitable venture. It's unbelievable what they're being allowed to do. You know, other people have brought up how much Duke Energy and CEOs are making. 8.8 for their CEO last year, 6.9 for the CEO for that. But what we're not looking at is how much they're paying in dividends. And when you can make more off of a stock utility than you can a regular privately-owned corporation, there's something very, very wrong. A public utility should not be posting that type of profit margin, that type of dividend return to investors, and they can't without raping us for it. Thank you.[533.75][533.75](APPLAUSE)
Bill McCorry. Adam Bigelow.
Mr. Allen Swed, the testimony about to get in this proceeding will be the truth. Hold for the next matter to his testimony.
I do.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Adam Bigelow. I live at the O Box 284 in Colorway, and I live in downtown Sill, North Carolina. And I am glad to have turned that microphone off so I could speak to you guys without using a little bit of electricity. I wonder if maybe we could turn half the lights off.[584.12][584.12](LAUGHTER) I am a Duke rate payer. Hi. Thank you all for coming out and having this hearing out here in the western counties. I really appreciate it, even though you're made to. You came out and you get to hear, and that's a wonderful part of the democratic process. Contrary to some of the reasons that Duke Energy is claiming for asking us to go and burden ourselves in these hard economic times with a 17.4% residential increase on average for... to cover the cost of their power, their coal company and the coal-burning power plants is because of an increase in demand in North Carolina that they claim, plus a projected future increase in demand. Now, I'd like to call into question that demand increase, both current and projected feature. North Carolina electricity use as well as nationwide electricity use has been going down on a residential scale because of efforts such as compact fluorescent light bulbs and Energy Star appliances. We are using, plus never, not to mention the wonderful savings we all have to make now because our, you know, the economy is collapsing in front of our eyes, and we can't make our bills as easily as we want to. Now, you know, so those are, those reasons, I don't see them as true. Plus, the projected future increases is based on maybe the last, say, 20 years or 50 years of increases, but they won't account for the technological advances that are on the horizon or the current ones that we are implementing to make our use of electricity more efficient. So I would like to ask that the North Carolina Utilities Regulatory Body of which you guys represent, take into account that the way that things have been going over the last 50 years or 20 years isn't necessarily how things are going to progress. And also, you know, as the previous speaker so eloquently said, you know, they are a public-for-profit corporation. They are granted a monopoly. The only protection that we citizens of the United States of America who happen to consume things, but I hate having this called consume. We are citizens of these United States. And the only protection we have from this granted monopoly is this state-regulated body and our legal protections. They have to make a profit for their shareholders. That is a federal law. You cannot exist as a corporation, as a business, and not show a profit for your shareholders. They're not selling widgets. They're not selling Frisbee discs. They're selling pollution. They're selling electricity that we need. Now, I could go home right now and not turn on my lights. I could, I could not pay Duke one more cent. That is my right as a customer of this power company. I like to have the lights go on. I would like it if every time I flipped the switch on, it wouldn't blow up another mountain in West Virginia, or Virginia, or Tennessee. I would like that, because it hurts my soul. But that's not why we're here. We're here to ask you to not make the poor people in North Carolina take on an unnecessary burden of providing power. Now, you know, Duke may be trying to expand their electricity, and they are going to show more use in the area because of selling it to out-of-state cooperatives, especially South Carolina and Georgia. You know, their growth that they're projecting is going to be outside of our state, but yet state-paid people, North Carolina people, are supposed to pay for that. You know, 17.4%? I don't know what actuary figures or what tables they use to come up with that number, 17.4%. I personally think they are asking for a whole lot so they can get a little. I believe that if I have a lemon car I'm trying to sell, and I want to get 900 bucks out of it, I'm going to start the negotiation at $2,000. So I ask, not only do you deny the increase of 17.4%, but I ask that you give us, maybe make them pay some more. Take it back and make them give a 20% decrease in the amount that we have to pay.
Yeah.
And maybe they can have some of their...[892.04][892.04](APPLAUSE) And maybe they can have some of their million dollars in CEO compensations and billions of dollars in profits. I don't know about y'all or the people in this room, but I am not a mathematician. People start talking about more than about 130 individual things that I can't picture. I have no idea what they're talking about. But I've done some research into what some of these figures mean, and a billion is a lot. Okay? If you have a kid's play bucket of sand, and it's filled with sand grains, you have on the order of 100 to 300,000 sand grains. To get a billion, you'd need seven miles feet. And I thank you for your time.
Bob Coppers, KPDRC.
Mr. Allen Swed, the testimony about to get in this proceeding will be the truth. Hold for the next matter to his testimony.
I do. My name is Bob Coppers. I'm at the 1650 Rose Creek Road, Franklin, North Carolina, and I am a Duke customer. And the county that I represent is also a Duke customer, as was established earlier this evening. A lot of what I wanted to say, Ronnie Beal already said, it's hard to follow on the bill. You shouldn't do that, you can avoid it. But there is a couple of things I want to point out. I'm here to represent several groups of my constituents. One, the citizens of this county, which, and other counties that are around, who so adequately and eloquently expressed their dissatisfaction with having this burden fall on them. I'm not in corporate business, but I am on the county commission. And it strikes me that what we're saying here is similar to the commissioners of Macon County asking for a 17% tax increase and then having our fund balance go up by 15%. I can only imagine what the reaction out here would be if we did that. We're not going to. Okay? We're not going to. I can only... I understand, it's my fault. I can only, I can only guess. But my other hat, and the other group that I want to talk to you about tonight, is I'm a civics teacher. Just last week, I talked to them about you folks. And I got to say, no offense intended, that you're much more impressive than I probably described you.[1048.00][1048.00](LAUGHTER) But, and I did not mean that offensive. But my point is this. If Ronnie Beal is where I buy my gas, and Ronnie Beal goes up by 17%, I can go to another gas station. If Duke Power goes up by 17%, I can't. There are no market forces acting on Duke Power except the ones that you bring. And all I ask tonight for all my civic students and all the citizens of Macon County, be our market forces. Thank you very much.[1088.13][1088.13](APPLAUSE)
Mr. Allen Swed. The testimony about to get in this proceeding will be the truth. Hold for the next matter to his testimony.
I do. Glenn Taylor. And I am representing Macon County Department of Social Services, and we are a Duke customer, and I personally am a... State legislature commissioner. On October the 16th, there was an article in the Franklin Press, and it reported this meeting tonight. And we were meeting at that time with a group of concerned community leaders. One, you heard, the second, my ministry, also curate net, and other agencies within the county. And it talked about the proposed...
It does. Point, point, point. What do you have?
And the article talked about the increase that comes on a time when the county assistance groups have been needing to prepare a plan to coordinate services and maximize resources for what they anticipate to be a difficult winter. And if you were here in Macon County in the last year, we all know that it was a difficult winter. This year's projected to be worse. Not weather-wise, because I don't know the future, but funding-wise for our citizens. This article goes on to say that funding cuts and resources and the limitations coupled with the rising demands could impact our citizens' ability to be able to come in for services, the people that we serve, which are children, families, disabled adults, and seniors. And I'm telling you here tonight that it's not a could impact, it will impact if there's an increase. Our low-energy assistance program that was reportedly briefly denied, that said we had $487,000 last year, and this year we're cut to $46,000 in the LEAP program. This is a program of low-energy assistance that is not only just here in Macon County, this is across the state of North Carolina. We get our money from the federal government that comes down, trickles down to the state, and the state sends it to the counties. Everyone is cut. Last year, we did this to 1,700 families, and we're looking for 200 families this year on this LEAP program. The criteria has been changed. It's changing as we speak. All the checks that come that we get for this money with the assistance will go to our vendors. If they are in cutoff, and if they qualify, our Duke customers, we internally pay that bill. If it's propane that they heat with, we pay that bill up to a portion. But the target populations have changed. The LEAP program that will start in December, December 1st, all members in the home have to be over 60 years of age to qualify. Or a member of that family has to be disabled, and to be determined disabled by the Social Security Administration, their guidelines. After February 1st, when we get this money, and after February 1st, if there's anything left, then children with 500, the age of 500 that are home, they might be eligible if there's money left. We don't know if there's going to be money left. The Crisis Intervention Program is the second program that Department of Social Services across the state has, called the SETE program. Starts November 1st, which is next week. We're also cutting that program. They are changing the regulations, the criteria on that date. We got new figures even today. And our, last year, our budget was $218,000, and right now it's 207, but it may cut or it may stay the same. We won't know until November 1st. We have already had reports that people are going to cancel their program law on October 31st, because this is a first come, first served, and still based on eligibility. The SETE program helps that someone in the household that's 60 or over, someone that's disabled in the household, they do have to be a U.S. citizen, they have to be a resident of Macon County, and also there's children in the home under five years of age. And as I stated, in December, that changes, and we don't even know what changes at this point in time. Looking at both of these programs, we were able to help 2,245 families last year. We're looking right now to look and help 745 families because of the results and the code funding. It appears right now that 1,500 families that depended on the Department of Social Services, where Duke Energy received some of this money for cutoff notices, where propane gas companies, the fuel oil companies, people that had wood, that were able to be served. We won't have that money. We cannot pull it out of mysterious stock to give people money to help with their heating prices, and they book their prices. And the heating crisis being the electricity that they use. This hardship also on the other agencies as well. We don't know what we're going to do. We do know that 33% of the children in Macon County are living in poverty. We have tried to educate the community when we knew our cuts were coming down. I went to the Duke Energy website, I did PowerPoints, I put off things that was there, energy-saving tips, we put it out on a DVD in our lobby, we put a poster, we had these community meetings. But our resources are limited. We are asking to help western North Carolina by reconsidering a high increase that drastic. Our working, poor, here in Macon County, needs to put food on their table. They need to get in their homes. The motto of the Northern Educational System from the Department of Public Construction says, "No child left behind." And we feel that no family should be left behind. And they should not be left behind to be hungry, to be cold, or to be in the dark. And that's what's going to happen to a lot of families in Macon County if this increase is as high as it's standing. Thank you.[1529.04][1529.04](APPLAUSE)
Raymond Nelson.
Mr. Allen Swed, the testimony about to get in this proceeding will be the truth. Hold for the next matter to his testimony.
I do. I don't know about the rest of the public, but I receive...
Give your, sorry. Give your name and address.
Raymond Nelson. 9 Hertz Road, Woody, North Carolina, and I am a Duke Power. I don't know about the rest of the state. I received my notice, public notice, on October 11th this year. As a senior citizen, retired person, 26-half-year baby veteran, combat veteran. I'll go a bit concerned, especially since the power commission said that I had to make a response by 24 October. And the thing was dated 28 June. I wondered, why does it take so long for them to get it to me? Maybe, maybe not. I was wondering, is it because I would have a few days' response later by the 24th of October? But I did that, by their rules. I didn't do it for me. I did it for all the senior citizens, all the residents of Swain County, all the military and retired people of Swain County. I did it for the little people. I didn't do it for the big business. They don't need it. They're millionaires, multi-millionaires. According to the figures I looked on this, they say the rates are due to 4.8 billion capital investment. By their rates down here since last increase, they pulled in $8.76 billion. To me, that's a profit of $4 billion in two years. I think that should be enough for big business. All with their listeners' capital investments. They were talking about riders. As a resident, not a businessman, but as a resident, I claim riders are made from tax. They're called deductions, but I go on and claim 20%. Big business claims the riders, and then they want to add them in addition to everything else to your bill. I don't think that's right. I don't think North Carolina Security Commission would allow it. I don't think it's right that I have to pay for a failed windmill project, 3.7. It was not my fault. It was Duke Power's engineers that made the fail. It's their fault. Throughout this nation, big companies, CEOs are being paid big bucks for not doing their job. If I don't do my job, I get fired. They're paid by consumers to run a business to make money. When that business fails, they get a bonus. Now, I think that bonus is because the stockholders made money. They're the owners of it. I don't think the stockholders at Duke Power should rate any raise. I think more billion than, more billion than last two years is enough profit. The majority of that has been paid by residents. I've heard several businesses, people either salesies, have claimed, yes, they have to put money into their business. They have to do it to make money, and they pass a very small percentage back to their customers. Duke Power doesn't want to do that. They want a class of all to the customers. All. I don't think it's right. I don't think you should allow it. Majority of that has been paid by residents. I've heard several businesses, people either salesies, have claimed, yes, they have to put money into their business. They have to do it to make money, and they pass a very small percentage back to their customers. Duke Power doesn't wanna do that, they wanna pass it all to the customers. All. I don't think it's right, I don't think you should allow it. I don't think the little people who can't afford it, on social security, no pay increases in two years. Our retirement, no increases in two years. Duke Power, four billion dollars in two years. Figures don't add up. And I hope in North Carolina, we start a trend to tell big business, this country's had enough, and we're putting the stop to it right here, right now, right in the great state of North Carolina. Thank you. Any questions?
Marie, Marie Galaz.
Ms. Thomas Webb, testimony about to give this proceeding with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Marie Galaz, and I live in Slattlock.
Duke customer?
I am a-
Please make your statement.
What's my last name, please?
G A L B Z. I, uh, I'm, I just wanna address two items in the mail that I received. One is that chocolate report, one is top where it says Duke is seeking approval of a return on common equity of eleven point five percent. I would like to get somewhere near that on any kind of an investment. I haven't seen something like that on cash flow accounts in savings accounts in banks for years, and they're projecting that out. Um, and they're asking for this, and I don't understand why, other than because they think they just heard it. It's, uh, someone had mentioned a guarantee, so that struck me right away, like eleven point five percent, hmm, okay. The other one was fifteen point two percent, they're asking for an increase of approximately fifteen point two percent over current revenues. I think you ask any businessperson who isn't in the Fortune five hundreds in the top whatever percent that they were mentioning earlier, somebody said that their returns were at five percent, Duke's was five percent. I think businesses would like to have fifteen point two percent over their current revenues too. I think these are obscene numbers that they're requesting here. I think that they've lost touch with what they are producing for their customers, which is us. And I think they have taken advantage of good times in the past, and they're producing this as business as usual. And they think that because it worked in the past, it's gonna work now. But there's so many of us that don't have jobs or incomes or have part-time jobs, so we have more time to read mailers that are getting sent after us.
That's really good.
And we have time to go on the internet and do the research, and that's what's happening now. So we're asking, I'm saying, these numbers are obscene. Someone else mentioned that, I'm surprised, but I felt confident to be able to add it too. My last comment is, I'm guilty, you have in the paragraph saying they're requesting the increase because, to be included because of lower sales volume. I'm one of those who reduce the volume of their sales. I consciously am a conservative user of energy as a consumer, and I thought that that was a good American thing to do. I thought it was being a good citizen. And now I feel that their requests, these obscene requests are penalizing me for doing something that I've been encouraged to do by my country, by myself, by my integrity as a human being, so that they can have their million dollar salaries, million dollar salaries. And I am very frustrated about that. Thank you.
Selma Sparks. Please state your name and address to the record.
Ms. Thomas Webb, testimony about to give this proceeding with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I affirm. I'm Selma Sparks, I live on Meadowbrook Drive in Franklin, and I am a Duke customer. I have to be, I don't have a choice. And, um, I come from a place where I didn't have to pay for my heat because it wasn't electric. But here, everything I do is electric, in my apartment, everything is electric. And I'm a senior citizen, I'm eighty years old, and I'm living on a fixed income. I haven't gotten an increase in my pension for a couple of years, I haven't gotten a social security increase. And of course, the other bills have been going up. I came to Franklin and found, oh, I can live for less than what it costs me where I come from. But what's happening is, with the increase in utilities and electricity in particular, it's making, gonna make it very difficult. And the seventeen point four percent for residents, this to me is, people have used the word obscene, oh yes, this is an obscenity. And to ask this of people, when you have a large number of senior citizens in this area, who can't possibly afford that. They're having trouble paying for their drugs for their drugs, their pharmaceuticals that they have to have to live, they're having a hard time paying for food to live. And now you're saying, if you wanna keep your lights on, and if you wanna keep warm, you're gonna have to pay this company that can give their CEOs fabulous increases just recently, and now they're asking, oh, we need money. What do they need money for? These guys need to make more than a bi-, they need to make a billion dollars a year? I don't think so. I think this is incredible, I think this is absolutely unacceptable. For them to say that at this point, they need more money, they don't need more money. And if they do, stop giving these big salaries to these guys. Stop giving, you know, okay, so you cut back a little bit, look at your budget, don't take it out on me. I'm the guy who isn't making a lot of money. I'm getting less than twenty-five thousand a year, and I have to live on that, but I have to pay you now or else you will out. My daughter came down and she showed me how I could change, lower my electric use by changing the bulbs that had been put in by the landlord. She showed me how, so we went out to do that. And I said, oh, thank you, I didn't know about it, she came and she told me, so we started doing that. But the seventeen percent increase on electric, electricity, something that you need. I can't keep warm unless I use electricity in my apartment, because that's what it is. If I wanna be comfortable, I have to use it. And the bill goes up, I asked one of my first ones, went up, and I looked and said, oh, boy, that's really, that's something, okay, but I can deal with it. But now they're asking for this increase, I think it's incredible. In fact, I think it's criminal. I think that a company this size, Duke, that is making the kind of profits that Duke is making, I think it's criminal for them to even to ask for. And I think it would really be very, very shame and very un-people for anybody to allow them to have this increase. I think this time, they shouldn't have any increase. I see no reason why they should have an increase, they're doing very well. And I think they should continue to do and to make sure that what they produce is clean energy. Don't make me pay for your dirty energy, clean energy. And I think they're making quite enough money to do all of this without saying to the poor worker or the poor senior citizen who is retired and living on a fixed income, oh, well, we want you to pay more because we want to give our investors more, more return. We want to give our CEOs more salary. I think that's insanity. I really think it's insanity, institutional type insanity. And I'm here to say that very, and I've talked to some of the seniors in the area that I live in, and they were saying, oh gee, what will I do? How can I do this? And I said to them, well, it's time you stand up and you tell the commission, you can't have this, because we can't do it. And I'm hoping that you will think about the people, I know Duke doesn't care about the people, but you're supposed to. And I'm hoping that you will show your caring for the people in this area, that you do care enough, and say to Duke, no, you can't have this. Thank you.
Selma Jess. C H E S, C H E S.
I'm also conflicted.
Can I have your name and address?
Uh, sure, Jess. Franklin, and I'm a Duke customer. I'm conflicted because I'm also a Duke staff member. However, my staff. And quite frankly, I feel exactly the same as many of the others here. Uh, it's an unnecessary burden, and whatever Nicholson times I'm getting on my stomach, you're taking more away if you increase my, um, costs every month. Uh, but I just wanted to add one more thing, I really feel that although you're taking money from this hand and perhaps putting a little bit more in this hand, a whole lot is staying in the middle. And it needs to be better allocated and better, more oversight needs to be produced. So that your CEOs and all the people with their golden parishes may take a step back and take a breath and think about our country as a whole and the situation that we're in right now. But before I go, I do wanna thank Duke for the light bulbs, appreciate it. I'm cutting back on my pocket.
James Burge.
Ms. Thomas Webb, testimony about to give this proceeding with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I don't swear, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna have to confirm. Okay.
Ms. Thomas Webb, testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yeah.
Please state your name and address.
James Burge, seven hundred seventy-five, seven hours, I mean.
Here in Franklin?
Franklin, I'm a Duke customer. I've been a long time.
B U R C H.
I, what I wanna say a little bit right quick is, just a lot of it's maybe not so much fact, but how I feel. I really feel like it is a strategy of Duke parent to set this at seventeen point four when really they might have in mind a five or ten, even a two. And it won't come out a winner either way, because that's what, and it'll make us as customers feel like, well, if they come later on and said they, they got a five or a ten point, then they come out a winner anyway, and it's a way of just making people feel like if they may have won a victory, they don't need nothing. I think it was wrote about, it said, "The only way that capitalism will ever work out is on moral principles, culture, and pure democracy, the most democratic country that's ever been." But the only way that it can work out is for greed to set in, because capitalism is so free, it can open it up to greed. And corporations, companies, whatever you wanna call it, it's taken over, they love it, your vote don't count that much anymore. And this grassroots movement right now that you're seeing is regaining, capitalism collapsing. And it's one of the shortest forms of government probably in the history of the world. I think capitalism has probably not been in effect, is shorter than any other system that's ever been in place. But it's gonna collapse in about a hundred, two hundred, whatever years it's been. If so, we don't go back to some kind of regulation, because this company is not like where you have a choice of what you wanna buy. We've moved into the technology now where electric is a necessity, not only for medical, but you've just gotta have it, because nobody can go out and have a big enough creek, a river, whatever, to produce their own power. And we've moved into that kind of technology to where it's a comfort, because I didn't have it when I grew up. And it's a, it's a luxury in one way, but it's also a necessity, and you gotta have it. And it's not like, like Bobby Cooper's was talking, and he hit it right on the nail. You can go over this competition, I could go to a different gas station, I could go to a different clothing store, they got a monopoly, you ain't got no choice. And that's scary when it's not regulated. And that's the reason that our country's heading toward collapse. I served in Vietnam War, I went through the Vietnam War as a paratrooper, once a paratrooper, always a paratrooper. I went through the Persian Gulf War, but I'm concerned for my kids and grandkids, and even for my generation. If it keeps going, this grassroots movement, people, is a warning to us, it's something that's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, uh, it's gonna come violent, I think eventually, not through the grassroots movement, but awareness of, just housing has went so high that people can't afford the rent. Something's gotta be done to regulate, you cannot have capitalism without regulation, it ain't gonna work out. And it's took it this, it's been lucky to get this far, but you're getting to see the effects of it now. And I'm telling you, it's, the whole thing is heading toward a collapse, and it may not be overnight, but it's heading that way. And you're getting to see that now, people are getting pushed more and more into a corner, and, uh, and the big companies have took over. I heard somebody say something about that you, uh, somebody paid so much a political party, I thought that was against the law, is that not, or? It's not? Well, I thought, I thought like, you cannot raise money when you're running for president or for political office.
We can't answer all those questions, you, Mr. Burge, you just need to tell us your position, please.
Well, I think you know it now.
I do. Appreciate it.
Gerard Bradley.
Uh, it's me. How y'all doing? Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me talk to you today.
I'll get your name.
My name is Gerard Bradley, I live at Four Holly Tree Drive, okay, I live at Four Holly Tree Drive, Franklin. And yes, I'm gonna tell the truth, so help me God. Yes, I do, sir. Okay. First of all, I root the last speaker, the fact that our country is in danger. And if anybody watched the news tonight, I was watching the news about, um, what's happening in Oakland, San Francisco with protesters. Police are having to step in and move people, and it's starting ugly. Okay. Speaking to you, Duke, is all big business, consider that a warning, I don't want it to happen, but consider that a warning. And take heed to the situation, that you don't put too much pressure on the people, because, um, people, when you got your back to the wall, there's no recourse. And if I was not a peaceful man, I would not say that in a courtroom, because now you know where I live, and you know who I am. Okay. I'm not a big businessman, I am a single operator painting contractor. And yes, this increase is gonna hurt me. And I just wanna go on the same, on the record saying that I object to it. And again, I just ask all big business to take heed of what's going on. And I ask you commissioners to take heed, that's not pretty, and I don't wanna see it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry Stinker. S T E N G E R.
Ms. Thomas Webb, testimony about to give this proceeding with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. My name is Larry Stanger, I'm a resident of three twenty-five, I'm sorry, thirty, twenty-five forty L E J Road in Franklin. I'm also a customer of Duke as a residential and also as a business owner. Um, I'd like to address the reasons that Duke has given for the rate increase. Uh, but before I start, I'd like to ask you all a question, I've heard the number fifteen point two percent increase and seventeen percent increase, which is the correct number?
Really, I'm supposed to answer your questions, but one has to do with the residential service and one is the overall increase.
Yes, sir. Okay. I, um, one of the things I'd like to make a comment on before I address the reasons was that, you know, there's a fine line between a private sector corporation and a quasi-monopoly corporation, which Duke Energy is. And they provide a very critical product to the American public, which is electricity. And when a corporation like Duke Energy has guaranteed an eleven point five percent net profit, the actions-
Hold the microphone, I'm trying.
The actions of their management requires a much higher level of scrutiny than normally justified by a normal corporation. And some of the reasons given for such a huge price increase were as follows. They are having- They are having a lower sales volume. Well, when the worst increase in American history hits the American people, sales volume in almost every sector of our economy is reduced. Asking that we pay more for the electricity because we have to cut back is like asking the American people to be penalized for saving on their energy usage. The average American family has lost about $4,000 per year since the recession started. Penalizing the American consumer with a rate increase does not appear to be a good publicity... Good publicity for Duke Energy nor a good reason for having a rate increase. Another reason given was that they have increased costs for their employee benefits. Well, again, the American people have also had increased costs for their health care and have received less benefits from their employees. Duke Energy has the ability to modify their employee benefit package and not just rely on a guaranteed profit not to do so. The third reason given by Duke Energy was that their volunteer opportunity program is which they are buying out employees to reduce their labor costs. Now, asking the American people to pay upfront for reducing Duke Energy's labor costs is just plain wrong. Because over the long run, the savings on labor cost is an investment with its own return. Another reason given was that they have a capital improvement of four point eight billion for plant modernization, including complying with upgrades to reduce dangerous air pollution. They give no data on the interest rate they are paying for the use of the four point eight billion. But if you assume a reasonable interest rate of four percent, that comes to less than two hundred million a year. Yet they're asking for six hundred and forty-six million as an increase per year. A fifth reason they did is that they wish to recover the three point seven million dollars they've lost on the coastal wind turbine project. Now, without knowing the reasons why they canceled or abandoned that project, or who made the decision to do the project in the first place, are the consumers responsible for bad management decisions? How much did Duke Energy get for the carbon credits for that project? And was that included in their profit and loss compilations? The Duke Energy and the Progress Energy potential merger makes them the largest utility in America. The reasons management gave for this merger was that it created synergisms and price discounts for fuel and related savings. But I see no mention in their request about the savings portion. Should that not be part of the public record? The price of fuel has dropped significantly even without a merger, but we see no mention of that savings either. We only see the expenses. In closing, no regulatory authorities such as you folks have ever envisioned the economic conditions we are facing today. The American business model needs to be rewritten to fit into a global business model. We all need to adapt to the changes and find better ways to make things work at reduced cost. Duke Energy is no different. Corporate America needs to realize that they don't just report to the stockholders and Wall Street. They also have a long-term moral and judiciary responsibility to the social stability of America. I would therefore encourage the Utility Commission and the State of North Carolina on behalf of the people of this great state to thoroughly investigate all aspects of Duke Energy's requests, given the hardships that the people are facing. I would also sincerely ask the executives of Duke and Progress Energy to strongly consider the impact of their decision-making on society, the environment, and the continued reliability of supplying electrical power to the grid. As Americans, we are all in this together. The people have no place... The people have to place their trust in the Utilities Commission and the State of North Carolina to ensure that reasonable decisions are reached that balances the needs of the people and the need to produce energy. Please don't let us down. Thank you very much.
Chuck Holland. William Thomas.
Salmons, where the testimony about the given this proceeding will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, Captain.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
I'm William Thomas, and I live at 39 Prosperity Drive in Franklin. And I'm a Duke customer. And nineteen ninety-five, I moved to California. Riverside County, Palm Springs area. And I kept noticing my power bill about every two months kept going up. We had all these windmills in the valley producing electricity. And I asked somebody who was over the windmills, or they call them wind turbines, how much power they produced and how many homes would they power. Well, the guy told me, well, these windmills here, all the windmills we have in the valley will power every home in the valley. So I'm sitting there thinking, well, if that's true, then how come our power bills are so high? And they said that we can't sell you power direct. We have to sell our power to what's called the I S O or independent systems operators. And then they sell the power back to you. So later on, I checked. And I found out that Edison Electric in Southern California was buying their power from, guess who? Duke Power.
John Altrich. Colleen Wittercombe.
You may have said your last name wrong, Ms. Thomas.
You're going to be sworn, please. You'll have to have the word. Salmons, where the testimony about the given this proceeding will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, Captain.
So help me God.
Please state your name and address and whether you're a Duke customer.
I'm Colleen. Excuse me. I am a Duke customer. I think everybody here has to be. My name is Colleen Wittercombe. Two 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 Zurich Circle, Franklin. Okay. When I first moved to Nathan County about eleven years ago, I was very pleased at the electricity. The rates were something that I could afford. And I have remained, even with the slight increases that there have been, things that I can still say are reasonable. Another thing that I thought was very unusual when I first moved here was on each one of my electric bills, I saw a need for help to others who could not afford their heat, electricity, et cetera. And knowing this came out on my electric bill, I was sure the electric company was aware that there are people in the area that were having hardship. So this is kind of questionable that they would try to get so many increases in such a short period of time when they knew whichever company would come in and provide this service knew ahead of time that this was not a very lucrative county or a very lucrative actually part of the state. Or they would not put this on their bills. With that being said, I want to compliment each one of you sitting here tonight. I haven't seen anybody yawn, haven't seen anybody go to sleep. But I've seen a few that haven't taken too many notes. But with that being said, I don't know how far your legal arm reaches. But I would, if you decide to give a rate increase, ask you to keep in mind two things. If the rate increases could be done on a class rate. In other words, taking into account the amount of electricity used and also the amount of income for that particular family. This situation could be used and called a rate class. It is... It's out there, okay? The next thing is we need to ask you, or I need to ask you probably on behalf of everyone here, if you could put a cap on the increase this time and a cap on further increases and also a time limit on how soon another increase is coming. I mean, it seems as though these people increase every time of the dark and of the moon. It's just whatever. And it's really strange that this increase came about right after they merged with Florida Power Light with Progress Energy. A big headline in the local paper just before I left for the last week. And I come back and I find a rate increase. Gee, isn't that a surprise? Thank you for your time.
Jean Welch.
Where's your white hand, Commissioner? Salmons, where the testimony about the given this proceeding will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, Captain.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address and whether you're a Duke customer.
My name is Jean Welch. I live at eighty-one Bookside Drive. Yes, I'm a Duke customer, right here in Franklin. Just briefly, I want to say, well, could I ask you if I'm speaking to people who will actually be voting on this proposal? The people on this panel? Okay. All right. Well, you're kind of in the catbird seat, I guess. This is a great experiment, our country. We... There's never been anything like this in the history of the world, whether a huge diverse country can work for the common goals with a social contract to benefit everyone. That's really, really important. And I think we all have to learn to say no to greed, personal greed, corporate greed. We're all still reeling from the Wall Street heist. I just watched Inside Job about three times. The principles are very basic. It's not complicated. It has to do with greed. Social Security heist. Congress spent all of the Social Security money. Pension fund heist. G E D... Uh, G E D. G E. There's a book just out about what General Lecter did for stealing pension money. There needs to be regulation. And I think we all understand. What we've heard here tonight, that basically Duke Power wants to increase shareholder equity at our expense. And it's up to you, people right here, to have the backbone to say, no, no more greed. Enough. People can only take so much. And I think you know what's right. To do otherwise is just irresponsible, if not criminal.
Andy Rotota. Connie Orr.
Salmons, where the testimony about the given this proceeding will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, Captain.
I do. My name is Connie Orr. I am a Duke Power customer. My address is two five zero Beach Creek Road, Robbinsville, North Carolina. I serve as a Graham County Commissioner. And I don't envy any seat in front of me. I think I know how this field's done on a level of about one year right now. I would like to say that I go really far back with Duke Power in that I was on a committee in Graham County when Duke Power began their plan of putting large transmission lines through our area and worked with the committee to help them acquire the right-of-ways through Graham County. And I happily did so, and I've been a very satisfied Duke customer. I would submit to you, not as much as my neighbor, however, I bought a nightlight about twenty-five years ago. And the niece of my neighbor worked at Duke Power. So she... Rather than putting the light at my garage, it came across the stream in the backyard of her uncle. Now, I haven't said a word about it, and I pay it every month. So I have a very happy neighbor, thanks to Duke Power, okay? But let's get to some serious things. In Graham County, we are... The land in Graham County is seventy-plus percent owned federally and by Forest Service. And to start looking at an increase in the middle of an audit, in the middle of a fiscal year, is something that is nearly impossible to manage should that go into place because it would just create much undue hardships on our citizens. The other thing that we deal with in Graham County, one of the other things, is nineteen to twenty percent unemployment. Now, about thirty percent of those employees work out of the county on construction jobs and that sort of thing. Just about a month ago, we learned that twenty-seven percent of our children are hungry on the weekends when they don't have school lunches. Yes, we're working on this, all of these things. And no, we don't want a handout for every problem that we have in Graham County. But we would ask that you deny this rate. I mean, this increase. I would even agree that some of the people on a local level that serve me and my area merit an increase in pay. I have no problem with that. But the seventeen point four percent increase, I suspect, is not their idea and in my opinion, is certainly ludicrous. I have brought with me a resolution from the town of Robbinsville, a resolution from our Department of Social Services, and if I may respectfully read the resolution from the County Commission. Graham County Resolution, whereas the Graham County Board of County Commissioners received notice that Duke Power Energy Carolina's LLC has filed the application docket in E seven seven nine eighty-nine with North Carolina Utilities Commission requesting authority to adjust and increase its rates for the retail electric service in North Carolina. And whereas the Graham County Board of County Commissioners strongly oppose the residential increase of seventeen point four percent due to the economic hardships that our Tier One County is facing from state and federal cuts and feel that the increase is unjustified and hidden in the proposed increases of the overall increases, which include general service, industrial, and lining. And whereas the Graham County Board of County Commissioners questions the continued large compensation packages for top executives and directors of Duke Energy Carolina's LLC while Graham County is operating with one of the highest unemployment rates and lowest per capita incomes in the state. And whereas the Graham County Board of County Commissioners feel that any increase would inflict undue financial burdens on the majority of Graham County citizens, causing further distress among those who are on fixed and low incomes. Whereas the Graham County Board of County Commissioners feels that Duke Energy Carolina's LLC should reconsider the proposed percentage change to our rural Tier One County. Now, therefore, the Graham County Board of County Commissioners adopts this resolution opposing the rate increase proposed by Duke Energy Carolina's LLC docket, number E seven seven nine eighty-nine, with motion from Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Orr with unanimous vote of the board. And I would like to respectfully submit these to you along with a petition with twelve hundred-plus signatures. And I would like to meet Fred Alexander. I know he can start this.
Ellen Boyd. And last, I have Natalie Warwick.
Salmons, where the testimony about the given this proceeding will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, Captain.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Natalie Warwick. I live at 415 Sawmill Creek Road, Slay County.